I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call Ben Hatt.
Yes.
Sam Van Buren.
Yes.
Jeff Corpenney.
Yes.
We're going to skip ahead to the gas speaker so we can get that moving down the road. They probably haven't had that ready yet.
Actually, we got the unit before we got here.
Yeah. So, we're going to skip ahead to them. We have the prosecutor, Ken Autoball here, the prosecutor, Amy Thompson.
Actually, I go by Amy Brown, just so you guys know.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'd like to make a few comments. For those that don't know me, I've been the county prosecutor down here a couple times. Amy is new to my office, started in May. Before coming to my office, she worked for, down in Washington County, for the city of Marietta. Did some trial work as well as some civil work for the city of Marietta. We're happy to have her. And so far, everybody's dealt with her, has been happy with her. She's been assigned to this township, so she'll be doing a lot of the work for you. Sorry to help. We've talked to most of you, at least one or more. It'd be nice to have the face to the person sending the emails. Part of the process of bringing in a new assistant prosecutor is trying to make sure that something didn't get lost in the cracks. We reached out to all of you here recently to get an accounting that should do a little bit of what legal issues, the one or more of you think are still outstanding, what needs to be addressed. I think a couple of them, maybe some of them, it's not going to be discussed tonight, but she's going to be the person at the front line for my office if we work with you guys. Obviously, she's right down all the way, so we see each other, talk every day about this township or every other township. So, it's not like I'm, just because I'm not here every week, every month, I'm on my leash a lot, so I just want to make sure that you guys get the answers, let me give you answers. Some of them are answers that are illegal answers, so you're going to have to ponder. Not constantly, because we don't want to be helpful if you sometimes, we can't come up with answers that are illegal answers, which is a decision for the politicians. By the way, just sitting down, the case is coming on the way here, I did run the wrong government information there. I'm sure that's a shocker. If you guys have particular topics, and she's got something she wants to prove, everybody have to speed on. Just so, for everybody else, there may not be detailed conversation about some of these topics. Just like if you went to hire an attorney, and if you have attorney-client privilege between yourself and an attorney, well, there's attorney-lying privilege between my office and the board as a whole. So, if we skip some details, it's not because we're trying to do anything wrong, we are trying to keep you out of the boot, because unfortunately, I represent this entity. And sometimes discussing legal issues, especially if there's a difference of opinion in public, is not a good thing. All right? But we're keeping you out, because a law requires a privilege to be protected. All right? We're trying to do that, and we won't have to, but it is helpful for everybody. With attorney-client privilege, we have the ability to talk candidly, without having to worry about all of a sudden, it's a political problem. Okay? Amy, if you want to go through some of the topics.
Okay, I can do that.
You guys need to correct us if our lists are incomplete.
Well, as Ken already touched on, I sent a letter out, middle of, beginning of July, and I was pleasantly surprised that no one had a lot of issues, so that's always good from our perspective, especially me, since I've been here since the middle of May. I don't want to walk into 30 issues like, oh no, nothing's been done. But, just basically, I had two responses from, you know, from the trustees, this walks from zoning inspector. One ongoing issue appears as the trash contract. I've looked at the signed contract, I've looked at the bid that was posted in the New York Advocate, and I don't see any issues with the advertising, didn't really see any issues with the signed contract that I received. From our perspective, I know that the trustee reached out to our office last summer, excuse me, last spring, and Eric Fox, who's no longer in our office, provided the bid package, the language, the contract, the resolution he used to adopt the contract, and he may have a letter that he would send to trash companies not complying with the contract in that package. If you don't have that, let me know, I can definitely send it to you. Okay, you don't have that? Okay, I can send that to you tomorrow if you don't have it. The issue. Okay.
Right, in my email?
Yeah. I can get it from you. Okay. Do you want me just to, I can just send it to you, Jenny, and then you can probably send it over?
Send it to everybody, you've got to.
Okay. I send it back here, Richard?
Yeah.
But the main issue that was related to me was about different companies picking up in the township. As you may or may not be aware, the contractor was residential pickup in the unincorporated areas. Trustee company related was complaining that other trash companies were picking up in the township. The enforcement mechanism under the statute, which is 50527, is that you would, you as trustee, would send a letter to those companies that are picking up in the township and basically say, look, we have an exclusive contract with Big O. If you don't stop picking up, you're going to be fined, it starts at $150, and goes up to $500. And that's what, that's what the body of the letter is going to be.
Who's in charge of sending it, for collecting the funds?
He's in charge of collecting it.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Listen, and then you report that back to the legislature.
Okay. That's, that's a personal contract between two different entities. How can you cancel a personal contract?
What do you mean by a personal contract?
See, if I and Ben Danny had a contract, and Joe Blow out here may build a contract to do what we've got, we're doing. You can't cancel that between me and you.
But the board has power to make you enter into an exclusive contract with a carrier.
It might be the carrier, but that's a personal contract that was signed before this took effect.
It's legally no different effect than any other monopoly that's recognized. For example, we have one cable company that serves certain places. We have one water company that serves most places. Up until recently, we had one telephone company serving one place. It is a recognized monopoly, and this is a monopoly that the township is allowed by all, by contract.
Let's see, you're canceling the personal contract.
I'm just telling you what the statute's very clear, it's exclusive.
Yeah, but that's, they've already, you've already got a contract.
And how can, you can make a comment.
I think the reason.
Let's let, let's let Mr. Brown toss it first, then we'll take some questions.
Okay. But that's basically, I mean, the law, prosecutor has what's clear, the law's pretty clear. I understand what you're saying, but this township board has the power to enter into an exclusive contract, regardless if you have a personal contract in place. So, at that point, that's going to take precedence. So, this, the contract was handled, as far as I can tell, completely appropriately. I didn't see any issues, like I said, with the advertising. The only thing that could have been an issue was the competitive bidding. It was advertised appropriately, you had one response, you can't personally contact vendors, so it's basically whoever sees it in the paper, it's their responsibility to tender a bid, and in this case, it was one company. So, from what I can see, there aren't any issues with it, and.
I got a question, I got to stop you on that. You say you can't contact them. I don't see anything legally wrong with contacting all of the trash haulers, letting them know the board is considering this matter, or that they're planning on doing it, or even sending them all a bid package, because there's only so many haulers. Why can't you? At least, I don't believe there is a law that says you cannot contact them.
There are prohibitions against giving favorable treatment to some potential bidders. And the risk you run is you miss somebody. You locate five, you send these who made contact with the five, and number six is, you didn't do it for me.
Well, what happened, in reality, is I missed all but one.
What do you mean, I missed all but one?
Getting the word out. Big O is the only one that responded, because they're the only ones that knew.
But all, all companies have equal opportunity.
Right.
Because the apples are taken.
That's the bid package.
But when you're saying that you're not allowed to contact them, I don't, I don't see why you can't contact, put notice and contact anyone you want, that the township's considering this matter.
We did put notice in the newspaper.
Here's the risk you run doing that. A, as I mentioned, you leave somebody else, and they have a legitimate complaint. Listen, you went down the list, you've got five, and you missed number six, and the whole bid process goes right out the window, if that turns out to be true. And a second problem is when you start doing that, make personal phone calls, or make efforts to reach out to specific potential bidders, it's impossible to recreate what inside information, if any, was given, what favorable conversations. That's why the law says you don't do that. Come, you can, if you put it in a paper, you can put it on your website, you can put it on a sign out here, and anybody sees it, as long as the notice is, protects you personally, the township in general, from making the bid package and the bid process invalid. I just don't know how you can safely reach out and get everybody, that somebody sent a bid, personally send me a copy.
And that's what Eric exactly told us the same thing, absolutely do not contact.
If you are right, sometimes you end up where you only get one person to solve.
Ken, what about a pre-award conference?
What you could do.
What about a pre-award conference? I've worked in government contracting for a number of years.
Are you talking about US government contracts?
Yeah, but we, I just saw it in the paper.
This is state law.
I just saw it in a paper where Murick was doing it. They're doing pre-award conferences and telling people what they're planning on doing, and giving a pre-award conference to let all the contractors come in if they want to be advertised.
But they put that out in the paper, they didn't contact all those vendors.
The other option is too, is if you only get one bid, reject it, rebid it.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, we have the right to accept a reject, and they're all bids.
Right.
But you can do a pre-award conference, that's universal.
It is a war, but we're talking about notifying people of the bid.
I know, but I guess it's terminology, it's terminology.
No, it's a huge difference.
Pre-award.
That's what I'm saying, there's nothing wrong with prior to the bid, doing that and contacting them.
No, but it is wrong, because what he's talking about is.
That's what I'm talking about, prior to the bid.
Two different types.
That's what I'm referring to, I'm not suggesting anything.
Terminology differences only, really, because I know they've advertised indoor numerous times, I've seen it under advocate about things they're planning on doing.
Then let's skip to the next one, okay? The fact is, even though, the fact is, even though it could have been rejected, because you only got one bid, and you're thinking, okay, maybe the word didn't get out, let's re-bid it to get potentially more competition. The fact is, what, what was done was not illegal. It does not set aside the contract, it doesn't invalidate the trustees approving that bid. They could have rejected, they chose to approve it. The fact that ideally, maybe you could get, go back to the drawing board and do another bid, and some people might think that's another way, or we should have advertised more than just where we bid. It doesn't undo the legality of what happened. Maybe it's a learned lesson next time. I mean, this isn't a contract forever, for heaven's sakes.
I think that's the only reason I'm saying that, is because there should be a learning comp, learning lesson right here, that we do pre-award conferences, try to let people know about it, in the township and outside, to vendors, and do it that way. Don't say, well, it was all legal, so we'll do it the same way the next time.
Fair enough, but you also have to, before people get really hugely concerned about that, is look, okay, since we haven't all the bids, you have it just from one person. I think I looked at, it was 11 bucks a month, a household pickup? That's less than I think. It's not like Big O was off the scale. What else, what other bids would have come in? You know, Big O would have come in a little smaller.
He's got a bill right now, Big O's not that price, that price is not the same right now. I got a bill laying right there on the table that's way more than that.
From Big O?
Big O. Right now, current.
Okay.
So, yeah, it sounded good.
Okay, that's, yeah, means if they're billing more than that bid, says they're allowed to bid, then we need to contact them, say, hey, what's going on? This is in violation of our contract.
This is the first the board has heard of this.
I never.
See, right, if this, if that's occurring, they're stuck with that bid. My point is, this is all a communication factor. All the people in township should know exactly what the contract said and what's going on. No, I guarantee you, they're doing that to more people than just that person. They don't know, they don't have a clue, they're just going to pay attention to it.
Because I have heard nothing about this.
Well, you have now, it's right there in black and white.
I write this tonight. I suggest that somebody in the township contact Big O, ask about that particular example, about what's going on, and need our assistance in getting a result. That bid package limits their ability to, to bid. It's not very specific.
They don't think so.
It's a detailed bill.
Well, in the contract, you know, it's built in that they're entitled to notice of any type of issue. So, obviously, if this is a new issue, Big O should be contacted and.
Right, because one thing should be happening, but communication's the big factor here, did I see, all the way through, from beginning to now.
What about people who are still using other trash companies, and they know that's a violation?
Well, there's no punishment, let's say, for people using, but there would be, the people that we get fined are the trash companies, and that's what I was talking to the trustees about. There's a, within 50527, which provides for the exclusive contract in the township, there's an enforcement provision where that company would get fined, and the township would put those other companies on notice, saying, hey, we know you're picking up in residential unincorporated areas, and that is under contract, you can't do that.
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
I mean, I totally understand that, but what if that person who's using a different company is an elected official that was sworn to uphold the laws of the township?
You're probably referring to me.
Yes, I am.
I use CMI, I brought my bill. To me, it's nobody's business, but I'll share it with you.
But I understood the trustee's oath says that they swear to uphold the laws of the township.
I haven't broken any laws. What law have I broken?
We're supposed to be all being using Big O, so trash hauling company, and you're not.
I disagree with you.
And yet, they just sat here and said, that's a legal contract with Big O.
Where we stand right now, Ken, from what I understand, is one, one letter was sent out, and they already did the 50524 last year, and you sent it to, to one particular hauler. But I've had several people notify me that there's more than just CMI coming in. So, they've already notified one hauler. Now, right up here, we've got Republic. There's people that have. Runkie, there's, there's at least three other haulers that are coming here.
Now, remember, if you're a commercial contract, commercial pickup, that contract means nothing.
I'm not talking about commercial pickup, I'm talking about residential garbage.
Where would Abby at? Let me make this observation. I'm not going to spend any time, or have people working at my office make, take any time, to give bid packages, resolutions, and, you know, and give you legal opinions, if they're probably going to be ignored. I'm just going to go pack up and go home. If, if the commercial people don't like the fact that this board has voted to give them, and maybe there's a reasonable difference of opinion on, maybe other people should have been notified, or whatever, but the fact is, I can't see anything illegal, you know, that sets aside the contract. And, but I need the township to designate somebody to reach out and to contact these companies and alert them. So, if they don't know, for some unknown reason, that they're not to be doing this, they now do know.
They know it.
Okay, well, we need, we're going to court to get them to stop, we need notification, written notification, certified mail, that kind of stuff.
That's right.
I'm not going to send that mail. Township can do that.
I believe it was, what was the woman's name?
Alice was on the phone.
Alice, yeah, she had suggested to us that we either take written statements from people that have witnessed somebody else pick up, or pictures would be better, so we would have some kind of fruit to turn over. And, you know, and today, I haven't had any pictures turned in, any written statements or anything like that. I had one person, I guess, that admitted that.
Say, let me out here, enforcement, it requires people reporting.
Sure.
And when reported, authorities look into it.
Sure.
Whether it's a zoning issue, whatever, you know, public records issue, somebody's got to be, you look into it. But that requires, the township designates one of your employees, one of yourselves, to do that. And then, get the notification, if they then still ignore it, then you give it to us, and we'll take the legal action.
So, you want to give them one notice, if they?
That's an explanation, I would.
I understand that last year, they did send out a notice to one of the haulers. Prior to.
Ken, if you can't prove, and go to, try to go to court without proof that there was letters sent out to them, how are you going to defend that position, if it was, the township never acted on that?
First of all, I don't have to give notice.
Well, how would they know?
Ignorance of the law is an excuse, and we all know that. The notice, the notice is unfairness. Maybe they don't honestly know.
That's my point.
It's not necessarily legal requirement, so much as, we don't have to come and take it to court, we want to get the problem solved.
That's my point.
Okay? And you know what's going to happen? They'll know next time when it comes up for bid, they'll watch for it.
Sir, you had your hand up, sorry, go ahead.
I lived there 40 years, we got half our time, we've talked out plenty of the 40 years I lived here. Okay, we was with, with the race management, it was $95, 73 months. I'm paying 43 now, that's a half of Satan's on fixed income. That's a big saving to me. So, that's what Big O is charging us, is $43, that was 30 months. I don't see this fault.
Yeah, my name's Dave Stan, I got the rope here. I'm the person Mr. Corpenney's speaking about, it has to be called a dumpster up here, but he's saying it's residential. This dumpster, I complained to him, it's not residential, it's commercial. He's argued that it's not residential, it is commercial. He's in my house and talking about this, he's right up here, and I bought a copy of my contract, it's state trade on a commercial dumpster. Can I present that?
Do you guys want to say it?
I, I don't, until we get a report of A, suspected violation, and notice to the contractor that it may be a violation, I don't want to be cut to the middle of your pieces of paper.
Okay, I understand that. Is there anything I can do myself to stop this harassment from him, that say, that it's residential, is anything I can do to stop this?
Well, first of all, I'm not going to necessarily agree that it's harassment, I'm just going to say this, the people that have the problem are the contractors under that. That's who we need to notify. And if they don't stop it, that's when we take the court.
Okay, so if, if, if they need to complain to you, and, and on paper, and then we'll look in to it, but I'm commercial resting. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And what I understand, like I said, last year, they did contact one of them under that code and sign of the leg. So, they already started that process.
You said we, so, they, was it the town, somebody in the township?
I wasn't in office until January this year. And two, after they awarded the bid, brought to their attention, and they sent a letter already to one of the haulers, not all of them, one of them.
You ready to think that's, maybe the rest of that?
I don't.
I don't think so. It was the two judges?
It was at this meeting, it's in the public documents.
Can you refer, tell us who it was to?
It was the CMI. It had a letter, and then they already processed the bump of the code that you presented.
Okay, so therefore, they've been notified one time, so we see them again, then take a report. Who's did that?
Like I said, one of the, of the three haulers was contacted, from my observations of what they were doing.
We'll check.
They're still picking that, because right next to.
So, let me, if you're starting over, you already started.
I don't want to minimize the ideal of having multiple bidders, that's the whole reason the bidding process is created. To add to that, his desire to have that, his desire to have that is true, in a perfect world. Of reaching out specifically, hey, you know, Bulling Township, Bulling Green Township's about to do bidding on this, runs a risk with this township and public companies, off my ground. It's all about somebody out, somebody's got a motivation to come in and set that contract aside, because it was awarded through a bidding process that was tainted by personal phone processes. And you put yourself in the township, and you were, yes, would have been great if you had six bidders to bid, or to choose them, hell yes! Part of my language. But you didn't.
Which is kind of making us.
But you know what? Somebody sued the township, because they're irritated, we're going to win litigation, I guarantee you.
Right.
Which was kind of, I guess, the opposite of what you were saying, absolutely bid out, and we awarded it, we had a, we had CMI, the guy from CMI come in, and he said, I'm very unhappy that you guys are not contacting me. Well, we advised not to contact him, you know, so.
That's right. What about me?
What was the saying?
That's fine, that's, that's one time.
He called our office.
But don't minimize the desire to have had more bidders. Great.
Right.
But those that would have preferred more bidders, don't minimize the fact that this is insulated from, from another contractor coming in and saying, listen, I'm going to go take you to court, because you gave a bid to Big O, but you shouldn't have, because they were personally contacted and I wasn't, or they got inside information and I didn't. That's the bidding process, that protects you from being sued. And if you didn't like it, if it was so out of line, you could still say, let's re-bid, one isn't enough.
I can tell you, two years from now, this all, this has been one year, we've had, two years from now, they'll be knocking on the door once, the bid, all of them, every single one of them, you know?
You're doing this for the first time, you're going, there's going to be.
Sure.
Sure. Definitely.
Next subject.
Okay. Had a question about employee drug testing for the township. Our office had actually prepared an opinion back in 2010, I was super late at all different townships. Reviewed that, still good law, cases are all good, statute's still good, so what I did, I actually emailed that to Jenny today. Basically, you need reasonable pause to, to drug test a public employee, you can't just do a spot drug test, you just have more protections as a public employee. If you suspect they're using drugs or alcohol, you do have that right, especially if there's some sort of, God forbid, injury or occurrence. The township would have to pay for the drug testing. If the employee disputed the results, the employee would have to pay for the test. What I sent to Jenny was actually a copy of that opinion from 2010, along with a sample resolution that would need to be adopted, putting forth your drug policy, basically saying, the township's committed to having a safe workplace, and part of that is committing to having drug, alcohol-free workplace. The opinion kind of went over some potential pitfalls, as far as people who are considered disabled, if they're drug or alcohol dependent. Basically, you can't just fire them because they're drug or alcohol dependent, any other reasons, like if they're insubordinate or late to work, or doing a shoddy job. I mean, if you document all that, you shouldn't have any problem with your hires. Basically, it's an unfair discrimination act. And obviously, there'd be an issue with operating motor vehicles, you need to minimize that. So, that would be in place for the drug policy to come in.
My name's Jack Hedges, I charge from Ridgeway 95, I've been working for the township. When we left the office, they said you were going to get a drug test. We were on the clock, we had the drug test, and it was over. Hospital release, are we going to be paid by the time they send us, and we get off the clock, back home, clock?
Let me back up a little bit, did you guys not want us not suggest that we do random drug tests?
You can't do random drug tests.
Say you don't want us to do random drug tests?
We can't.
But if they get hurt, or something like that?
Or you suspect they're using, then you can do it, but you can't just do random drug testing. You can do that if it was private, if you weren't a government agency, you could do that, but you can't just do spot drug tests.
Okay.
Keep in mind, nor can you do reasonable suspicion, reasonable suspicion-based drug tests if you don't enact a policy.
Right.
In other words, don't walk out of here thinking, oh, tomorrow I can just.
Sure.
No, you can't. You adopt the policy, and then, and only then thereafter, if you have a reasonable suspicion to be, then you can use the policy.
Need another driver pass, I had 32 when I retired from another way, and he had 35. We got them all the time, and I set it high 16 hours on the clock.
You were a CDL driver, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Difference. CDL rules for testing are diff, are more intensive. So, that can make a big difference.
It doesn't matter how long we sit there.
And I guess, I guess his question was, are we going to pay for it if we send him in? And I guess that would be up to us, if we're going to keep him on the clock, is kind of Kind of what he asked.
It would be up to you and you probably advise to do that. He's going to set something up that isn't going to make somebody sit for.
Right.
And there's also an acknowledgement along with the stuff I sent to Jenny, acknowledging the employee got notice of the resolution passed because that would be your policy. So you got to make sure that anybody looking at the township has, they don't have to sign it.
Let's see if there's a resolution made and if one of the, and sometimes we thought somebody might, we'd go ahead and just have it done, right? A test, a drug test. Oh, okay. You have to be able to verbalize the law. They're staggered and they're going to have physical evidence. They smell alcohol. They're constantly late and show up like they've been drinking. You've got to be able to verbalize.
Articulate a resolution. There's a list of factors and you guys are certainly.
But longer the resolution made and if somebody did get drunk and we'd already be set up or something like that.
Right.
So you can't just look and go, I think that person is an alcoholic, I want him tested.
Right.
I think that person smokes dope, I want him tested. You act out more than I think.
But it would just be a good policy in place if something would have happened down the road.
Is there many townships in Lincoln County that have adopted a drug switch?
I don't know how many have actually adopted. I know they were all advised about it. I know some have, but I couldn't tell you how many.
See, how many people have used it, what they've found, there are pitfalls and issues like that. They do that and figure out who else has adopted it. Get some anecdotal information on these guys, so at least some contacts, say contact someone so from Vanderbilt or whatever.
So there may be some that have done it at least a year.
Probably, yeah. I mean, it was, they were sent out in 2010, so that's entirely possible.
Vanderbilt probably does. They've been a major overhaul of employee policies for two years ago.
Jim Rock, DOT, CDL. Government says we got to check so many people, I don't suppose, pick out different ones. Computers go to pick them out. Two guys at the same office, same Colonel, all the time, rest of them aren't getting anything. So we got paid. I ain't bitch.
We can't explain now. All I can say is, you know what your mistake was? You didn't play the lottery enough.
I got one so good, I went and laid down on the couch and gave a sweep and next morning she came and played with this.
And you're complaining why?
I'm complaining now, I want to know before I go how many hours I'm going to be paying for. That's my mind.
A public employee is being asked to do that. You got to get paid. Two things are going to happen after that. They're going to, nothing because they are clean and therefore they're going back to work and they took a dock pay for a negative test. Or they're going to have some time off because it's possible.
Do you guys have any recommendations? I mean, if something were to come back, I mean, automatic dismissal, any kind of probation at all?
More fact sensitive. What you have to, what you have to look at and decide is, do you have the mechanism to really enforce it?
You can't unenact it.
You're going to say, hey, somebody's involved in a activity, they're going to fight that. And you want to do it for the time.
And you have to tie it into bad, something with the job. You can't just say, well, you're on drugs, you're wrong. I mean, because then you're running a foul of disability stuff and you don't want any part of that because you will get sued. So if you can tie it into, you know, falls asleep on the job, comes in late, something that actually directly relates to performance, then I think that's how you make the policy. There are a couple zoning issues, but I'm not going to get into those because I've been in contact with the zoning inspector and it's too premature to even talk about that. The last question I had was about zoning inspectors' phone records. It's my understanding that she has a personal cell phone and she's reimbursed twenty-five dollars a month. And I guess my question to you as the board is what purpose for the office would you have in taking a copy of her cell phone bill when it's her bill, when it's her personal phone? Dollar amount never changes, my understanding. You just kick in twenty-five dollars. Why would you need, I guess, what purpose would you, the board have in having a copy of that bill?
Mr. Corpin, he wants to.
I don't know. I've been residents have asked for that public record. So my concern isn't so much my wanting to see it, but a public record, they passed a resolution stating such specifically that the public could not get that record.
I've never had it.
There was a resolution at the meeting.
First of all, no township, no governmental entity should legislate or change the law. If that's a resolution and simply make something that is a public record into a non-public record, it's a useless resolution if that's what we're talking about. It is either a public record or it isn't and your resolution made no difference in that change. When it gets to this fact, phone, cell phone issues, the phones generally, okay? I'll give you an example. This is a county-owned cell phone that's paid through my office, as are five other ones for my office, okay? When that bill comes in, I go over the bill to make sure it's within the contract of what I pull my, the policy. It's not rolled over. I approve it for payment, the statement. And therefore, I use that statement to document the activities of my office. It is clearly a public record. However, we have unlimited minutes, it doesn't cost any extra. So rather than asking the people I need to make sure I can get a hold of that carry a personal phone and this phone, or the county-owned phone, I authorize them to make personal phone calls as long as they don't roll over the pool of minutes. It doesn't cost the county an extra dime. If they don't use it, or they use it up to this level, as long as it doesn't cost anyone, you can use it to make personal phone calls. Following so far? If somebody made a public record request for the office telephone, cell phones, I could pull those out, sit down with the employee and say, okay, which of these are personal phone calls? Redact the personal phone calls and then hand out the rest of the form as a public record. Because personal phone calls aren't about community activities. On the other hand, on the other hand, if my policy prohibited personal phone calls and therefore I was keeping them as a record of if my employees making personal phone calls, the whole document would be a person, would be a public record. Why? Because in that, to enforce my policy, that document documents the activity of my office. I'm monitoring, is it being misused in violation of our policy? So then the whole thing is a public record. I might exempt for that, I don't know, but the whole thing is kind of a public record. So back to the question she posed for your example is, is Bart's cell phone records being used for any township purpose? To make sure she's on the job, you know, she checks in, okay, okay, she says she called John Doe about this engine. Oh, sure, there it is, there's a phone call. If you're using her cell phone records for a township purpose and at least those township-related portions of her cell phone bill is a public record. If you're not at all, it's not a public record. And I'll change into another example. You probably don't know this, almost all copiers anymore, they have a digital thing and they store it. Okay? So anytime we get, as a county, we'll get rid of a, upgrade copiers, the IT department is worried about releasing it out, all those, who knows what, left on the thousands, the last thousand copies or whatever, okay? So the issue came up with the record commission. Well, we destroy those digital images without a record retention policy covering them. I mean, on C3. And the quick answer I had is if you don't use that to do anything for your office, it's not a public record. It doesn't document the activities, yada, 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 yada. You don't use it. On the other hand, if I occasionally had the company, hey, print me out an audit scan of everything so I can look through and see if anybody's using my office copier for governmental purposes, then it wouldn't be a public record because I'm using it to run my office. Back to her phoneies. If you're not using to monitor her activities, is she doing what she's supposed to be doing? And what, you know, you know, that, it's, her record's probably not a public record. If you were, it would be a public.
I'm not, please, sir.
It's not. My records, I write everything down. Everything I do, I write down and I type it up at the end of three months and I turn it in. They'd never ask for.
Do you see the difference I'm making? That's why mine clearly.
But if they wanted to do that, myself as the zoning inspector, paying for my own private phone, I would look at them and go, you buy the phone.
Well, that's true.
You want the records, you buy the phone, you've got the records.
That's true. Any governmental entity, if they want to know, hey, if I don't want to have to worry about personal phone calls or county phone and it's going to cost more to do it that way, then I can say, listen, this is the phone. You will do all business-related stuff from this phone, so we have a good record of it. And then if they don't, I fire them. They disband, right? So the question is, are the records, the documents, and it doesn't make any difference if they're in your personal possession or they're sitting over here. It's their use. Are they being used for a governmental purpose? Then they're a public record. Even though they're redacted out, if they're not, township doesn't use for any purpose, for any purpose whatsoever.
Since this resolution they pass.
I haven't seen it. We didn't have a copy of it.
Only I have the minute.
That is her record resolution.
Just the minute? So I would either do a clarification of that or whatever.
So how would it be, so what are you saying? Are you saying that they're wrong, I need to take and keep printing every month's records a year at a time for Mr. Corpin and CCL?
They keep saying, mister.
Jenny doesn't ask for a record.
The fact is, it's a public record and the public asked for it. That's the concern either. That's what I, I'll be concerned.
First of all, the distinction I've made, although legally correct, is very subtle. It's very understandable that people would notice. His belief that it's a public record is very reasonable. Okay? Because if he came to my office and asked for my cell phone, it is a public record. What do you want, Jeff? I mean, absolutely get it though. You can go to lots of governmental offices that have cell phones and ask for public records. The advocate did a blanket for almost all the county offices, not because they really cared, they just wanted to see if people understood what it is to comply with a public record request because of other counties they couldn't. And I'm going to have to report that Lincoln County had, all the county offices got glowing reports from the advocate. Because I'd beat my clients up if they don't get attention for the public access stuff, okay? So it's entirely understandable for Jeff or anybody else to say, oh, of course, it's a public record. But you got to look at, not just being used to document the activities of the government laws. But if that changes, they will become a public. Wait a minute.
But if that changes, then they're going to purchase the phone. Which isn't a problem.
That's why we pay our money. There's two different.
They're subsidizing the phone.
Her using it for township business versus the township using the records to conduct their business are two different things. I'll use my home phone. I'll use my home phone occasionally, call the police department and give advice.
That doesn't make it a public.
But if the county, now, on the other hand, if I then put in a request for reimbursement for a long-distance phone call, they might want my cell phone or my home phone record to verify that that's a cell phone that actually occurred. You see what I mean? It's what the government uses the records for. If they don't use the records to conduct unfortunate their business, it doesn't make any difference. I said, the employee on their own time uses their own phone. You see what I mean? You know what's really weird is all this, Jim? I've been in township almost ten years and I've never had anybody ask for the records for the, her cell phone.
The thing is, that's a good question. You can't ask that question. That's another element of a public record request, is you can't ask why.
I didn't interpret.
He asked why I wanted it, why I want it and why anyone else wants it. You cannot ask that question.
No, he was just saying he's never been asked.
No, that's what Mr. Hupp just said.
That's what I said, what would the board need it for?
Well, he's never paying for anybody else's cell phone. Okay, then, thank you. I didn't interpret his comment to be of what you thought. He said, what would we, what would we, the township, need her phone records for? In other words, what purpose would be served for the board to maintain, use her records? But you are correct.
For starters, the public record requests is they would come in. Not to have a resolution sitting there that we have in the books that says that they can't have a public record, which is what we have now.
You said a resolution.
But it's not a public record, so it doesn't matter.
Yes, there is a resolution that they pass.
We made a motion that the zoning inspector's phone records.
Stay private.
Would stay private, would not be a public record.
Or presented to any trustees.
Because prior to that, you were copying, having to copy the bill and you stopped doing it. That's what.
That action wasn't worth the time you do it. Because either it's a public record and you're stuck providing it or ain't a public record and you don't have to. It doesn't have to be provided.
It's not a public.
So if you do have a resolution that says something along those lines, it probably ought to be clarified or sent. Okay? Until the board, the township board decides to use the statements generated by that telephone, any future telephone, for a purpose of its own, that's a.
And if it is a concern, maybe you, the board should revisit getting the zoning inspector. And then there's a question.
But that's sad, folks. Jeff thinking it's a public record all this time, quite frankly, until I realized you guys abuse it for any reason. It took me walking through, you guys abuse it for, and her check, you guys use it for any reason. I never think through and say, no, it's probably not a public record. So don't blame Jeff for thinking otherwise. I'll bet you, you get out of here and you got a fifty-fifty bet. People don't want to lose.
So you're saying it's not a public record?
Until you guys have any reason to use it. In other words, here's an example. Let's say you want to reevaluate at some point whether twenty-five dollars is a reasonable accommodation for her doing business on, township business on. So you say, hey, let me see some records of how much business she really do. Now they just became a public record. So she gives you a year's worth of documentation of her state investment. So you say, oh, twenty-five dollars doesn't do it any thirty-five should be. Six months or one year, whatever she gave you to justify that increase, those just became public records.
That's exactly the point I was going to make when you get done with that. Because it's like, wait a minute, you're going to let somebody use the phone, pay them so much money, but you're never going to verify how much usage you actually paid for it? And you could maybe go to a different plan and get a track phone.
If they choose to get those records for that analysis, those records just became a public record.
I don't know where you can get a much cheaper twenty-five dollars.
Well, you can get a track phone depending on usage. That's exactly what he was saying, depending on usage. I've got a track phone that you can. I don't think it's an unreasonable request to ask for that information. As an elected, first and normal job trying to validate, where is your money?
All right, now getting into that, all I'm saying is if the request is made and provided for that reanalysis, re-determination, repeat consideration of what twenty-five dollars is the right amount, those who are, just being a little bit. They may be, the personal phone calls can be redacted out, it probably shouldn't be for the company. But the rest of it remains public. Once you've used those statements, analysis, it's just a good policy, bad policy, should increase, reduce it, get around the phone, whatever, you start looking at those statements. If there's any analysis like that, those statements can become public records.
Yeah, I got two questions. At this point, starting with cell phone. There was a statement made earlier that this has never happened before. Jim White is our other.
Zoning inspector.
Zoning inspector. He had his own cell phone and everything else. You know, we don't have one bit of trouble. On my bit, we never ever have one bit of trouble. But this past passing before, in White, he uses his cell phone, apparently the township, I think, bought a cell phone for him to use. So if they got a problem with this, they're talking about, white on the township, buy your cell phone. Then they.
I can tell you this, though. This is my philosophy on public records. It's a public record given. Here, don't waste my time. I actually had a case, remember, about five months ago, a big to-do of Delaware County Sheriff messing around with somebody, we're all in Virginia, and he was using FOJ, Ferguson Justice Fund, okay? So that's a big deal, an issue there, okay? Well, that's for the dispatch, they kind of just do random checks around. The allowance has a similar account, it's a FOJ account, okay? And my office, I sign every check that goes out. Nothing gets paid on my office unless it's got my signature. That way, yes, if something goes wrong, I'm going to be on the hook. Ain't nothing getting past me, okay, what's getting paid, okay? So I got this phone call from the dispatch reporter and said, actually, called the audit. My hobby of hearing law for a few years, two or three years. Called the reporter and said, I understand you want the FOJ laws. By the way, all I do is give an accounting at the end of the year, Mr. Ledger, all he have done. If you want to see the receipts, you're welcome to, call me in my office. You know, by the way, something Ferguson Justice Fund asked about, my office has another one that's called Law Enforcement Trust fund account. You want the records for that too? Let me know. And you're asking, because you know I wouldn't hide anything, but you say, here you go. The best way to deal with people that want public records from being a big news, you won't get rid of all of them, is give them what they want them to have.
I, I, I did that. Just like, you know, I did not refuse my bills. That's all was asked of was my bill, not the content of the bill, just the bill, which I gave.
Well, that was my question, whether or not, was the invoice or the actual list of the public?
They did not ask for the actual list of all my calls. And if they wanted that, we're talking hundreds of pages. So. Now, should you pay me to sit there and print them out and then go through and mark out my personal ones till it comes to theirs? They can do that. It'll take a while.
Let me give a fuck down those adjectives, okay? Rightly, wrongly, the fact that they were provided to the township, and you guys then used that, even though there was just dispute, you have to give, you don't have to give whatever, what you did give probably became a public record, or may have become a public record.
Now, no, the only, let me show you how her, Ms. Dubrow calls me, Mr. Corpenning wants my thumb bill record for this month to this month, which is approximately one-year cycle, okay? I went through all kinds of stuff. We do keep everything on record. I go down, I pull them, I go right off, all my children's names, my husband's name, all this off, I copy it, okay, then I give it to her, which took quite a while. And I said, why am I doing this? I made hearing to this, first of all. I'm doing it because, yeah, they gave me twenty-five dollars towards the bill, okay? Then I get another request, same timeframe. I'm like, I already gave it to you. They're asking again. No. And I did not give that one up. The bill does not change. They never asked for anything else but the bill. Every one of those bills were the same. You see what, it didn't make sense to me. They didn't ask for my phone, who I called and who I didn't call, who my texts were and who my texts weren't. None of this was asked of me. Was asked for the phone bill.
Just, just to make it clear, if somebody asks you something that it's a public record, you cannot insist upon an answer as to why they want it.
And the, yeah.
You, you are allowed, you didn't, you used to be able to ask questions. You can now ask a question, explain to them, detail on the note, it might help me identify which, what records really fits your bill, fit what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay? So if somebody comes into my office and say, hey, we want our records for, and we think, well, that's not gonna tell them anything. We can at least ask it. If you don't mind, we might be able to help you out, find out really what you're looking for, if you want, uh, tell me what you, your kind of, they don't wanna answer, you drop it right then and there. But you couldn't, it used to be, you couldn't even ask a question.
No, no, my rec, my phone record is not a public record.
Unless the township at some future point decides to.
Starts to change things. They can do that. And they'll purchase me a phone.
They cannot change it by resolution. They can change it by use.
Yeah. But they, when they have to change what my job is and the use of that phone, through them voting on it, only one can say, I want her to use it, you're using it. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It doesn't have to be all three trustees or two, the majority rules on what phone's gonna be used for. Are we gonna start calculating and seeing what she's doing, where she's going by the use of?
Any action of the trustees has to be the majority.
Okay, that's what I wanna confirm, so I don't get phone calls saying, I want you to use your phone. Okay? Just making sure, okay?
Okay.
From my perspective, I don't wanna see our township, every position for public records are denied because it puts us in a very bad place.
And Jeff is correct in that. Public records get a lot. This, this particular area, in fact, we had some discussions, well, my birth record actually is my public record. It's just a public record. And I got the, well, what do they use her records for? And I had to go through that mental gymnastics of the legal experience person, but come to the conclusion, geez, it's, it's, it's probably not Jeff's, it's a little bit. So, you don't get, let. It's a, it's a, it's an issue that is easily misunderstood or easily, they have two people on the opposite side, and there's people, let it go. Now, whether there's a difference of opinion as to whether or not there ought to be change in that policy, that is a political decision for three gentlemen at this table inside. And I'm giving that, that's between, whatever their votes.
Okay, this is, what can change in this stuff? We got a trustee who doesn't like to sign checks, a little boy. And if something happens to the other trustee, you know, God forbid, he's in the hospital, the employee needs to pay, what is the hope since this trustee, Mr. Corpenning, won't find him like Jeff? He does it all the time. He, he's not like you. He, he don't like to sign checks. What'd he do? So, you know, I, this is serious. I mean, if somebody has a party, like, God forbid, where somebody got in a car accident, God forbid, you got a man who won't sign other people's checks. How are they supposed to get paid? By law? I want to know this.
I'm gonna touch upon this as best I can, all right? Those kinds of things, unless until that actually happens.
It has happened.
That actually happens.
So I can't get that.
Okay? She just had to wait for her check. Because one trustee was on vacation. That probably, I mean, I'd have to look at that. Probably something between that trustee and voters.
Voters?
Voters? How does that?
How, but, we, we can, uh.
You don't like, you don't like that, vote him out of office, just like, you don't like the fact that I don't want to print the journal, vote me out of office.
So, so what you're saying is, if trustees just don't wanna sign your check, they don't have to sign your check?
There are mechanisms by which voters can remove elected officials.
But only every few years?
That, that's a voting mechanism. There is another mechanism.
If you came into my office, and you claimed to be a victim of a verb law, and I thought, I can't prove this case, you can yell at me upside down, one side together, and I don't have, I don't have to prove it for one court, okay? Your remedy is, is to try to get me through each now, okay? That kind of, that kind of behavior, you know, in my side, I'm gonna have to look at it more. The other, the bigger point of it is, I can't, I cannot lead the person to anything, why, or put me on the other side of the controversy with my opponent.
Right.
So? Okay, so that's, that's not something I can say more other than that. That's an issue between you as voters, one township, all the remaining township, and the one that you guys feel.
And actually, the reason why we're here, I mean, just trying to clarify.
Yeah, we're gonna sidetrack you.
Yeah, it's handy to just pop questions, but honestly, the bigger reason why we're here was just to get on the same page, because we've been hearing there were issues with our office and this township, and we don't want that, you know? We're here to help you guys out with the questions you need. But listen, I went over, were the only issues presented to us four of you. So, at this point, you know, from my perspective, we're on a level playing field. We, you know, we don't have, you know, there shouldn't be any hidden issues that should come up, say, well, I don't know, the prosecutor hasn't, I mean, I went through everything that you guys should have pending call. So now, obviously, if there's new stuff, that's fine, you prefer, but there shouldn't be any discussions about, well, I can't get through the prosecutor, this isn't getting done. I mean, that's really the bigger reason why we're here and so I can meet everybody. So, you know, we're not.
One other thing is, you know, just like they in township, or any number of boards I deal with, there's multiple people on, Board of County Commissioners, or Board of Southern Fields, or Party Commission, whatever, I deal with boards, whatever, that don't always see eye to eye. I, I might drop the weight into that, nor should I. I try to mediate when I can, other than that, I can't. I have problems with all kinds of.
Yeah.
All right? And I can honestly say, I get along with all four of these people, and I can look at them and say, you're flat wrong, and I don't like me, just behind the law. I don't have any problem with them, okay? But I can tell you that, you know, people just need to step, step back and say, you know what? I think so-and-so is an SOB, but geez, he's right this time, and just go on, study.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't mean to sidetrack you, but I, I'm gonna make verifi, it's gotta be easier, Ben, that field there from Big O was, uh, over tried, was that a residential or commercial, and was that, was that picked up in Bowling Green Township or another area outside of Bowling Green Township or making a beat?
I'll look at it. I have looked over.
That may not even be in Bowling Green Township, if they wanna be on this whole thing.
I'll look at it.
How many towns, few states that are like that or?
That's all I can do.
Huh?
For example, my case, because you don't believe why he brings out.
How you guys doing? I understand. Mark's, I know, he's just, he's, he's, he's. We'll take five minutes break, we'll send, get back to the meeting.
My point is, that contract is no good if nobody's ever watching. Did you select somebody to watch it? Take Terrence, it's, it's yours for three months. It's yours for three months. It's yours for, it's no good.
I'll take it for the first three months or first quarter.
Ken, before you run off on this contract, Ken, before you run off on this contract, would it be unreasonable for the township trustees to ask for current billing information?
I'm sorry.
Would it be unreasonable for township trustees, based on that bill, to ask for current billing information for studying the number? Because they could be doing this to a bunch more people.
It'll probably depend what answer they get on that. I'd give it the answer to Jeff, because I have a nation. The, the. Who, who gets residence. All right? Hey, thanks, Ken. All right, see ya.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Take you anywhere. You're taking part of us. Jeff.
Jenny, you didn't claim your.
I did claim, period. That's the problem. And once we accept thirty-five dollars.
But this, this could be going on for a lot more.
That's how I see it. I can watch, I can watch him, because he's been a lot of worrying about being drug tested.
Which one is that?
I said, I'd be watching you, because you were doing a lot of worrying about drug tests. I know, but they said they were, they had a drug test, and, 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 and they had a, you look like, you look like you're, you have to, you have to like, you just.
Five men to syrup.
I'm supposed to tell you, so I'll tell you now. He's not gonna change. And I don't wanna have somebody telling me, you can't have the cars out there. Because they're in an option. And Bob's starting moving out there, because somebody's certainly trying to set. The tractors. They're gonna be out there for, I don't know, three, four, seven, we got a truck, and Bill, the guy that's the tractor, he's getting married, and, 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 the tractors that cover the suburbs. I don't know if you know about that truck. Yeah? So when you met him, well, all this white dude, that he has brown hair, and he's, and he's scary, and he's, and he's, and he's, and he's. Why is he all that, too dark gray like that? I don't know what you're saying, mate, but it didn't work, he's, you know, totally missing, he's gonna work for you. I don't really know at all. He's, I know, I know. Little truck, he's got some kind of little truck. Or something, probably, and he's got a, a tractor, I think. And I don't know what else he's got.
Hey, Ben.
How many planes you got thrown at?
How many here?
Are you telling me, how many, how many, what? I don't have any.
Maybe go back around the hill.
Go back and look. That's what you, that's what you want to do anyway. They'll get you. There's that drug test.
Go ahead, go ahead, portion.
Yeah, and those trucks, they still go on every time of the year. Yeah, we need to shut that door.
She told me we did her first. All right, we'll get started again.
I got charged for that glass once.
We kinda have one more guest speaker, and that also falls under the comprehensive plans, and we'll just get that up so she can get home to it, so.
Hey, my name is Jeanette Newren. I work publicly in the county planning department. And I, um, was fortunate enough to work with the committee that the trustees set up to put together a comprehensive plan for the township. Uh, and I did, uh, we did have a public hearing, our committee had a public hearing, and then y'all had a public hearing this morning, or prior to this meeting, to talk about, uh, the document, and to accept some public comments, if anybody had comments. Um, the document has been made available here, uh, at the township house, in our office and on our website. And, uh, if you have any questions about that document or implications of adopting that document, I'm here to answer any of those questions. The biggest piece of the comprehensive plan is what is called the Future Landings Map. That's the, the big document sitting here on the table. And what that does is if somebody were to come in and wanna re-settle their property, uh, let's say take a residential property and put a business there, or. or take an agricultural property and turn it into a neighborhood, that kind of request would have to come to our office for a recommendation back to the trustees. What we use that map for is to say, okay, well, the township says that that property in the future should be commercial. So this is a good idea. This is something that the collective township came up with. And we can base our recommendation on the policies and the goals that this township has come up with. The process has taken a couple of years now and the committee's been working really hard. There were some members of the committee that changed and the staff from our county changed. I'm new onto the process. I started in April. I don't really have many details to present in the plan, but I think that there's a strong interest in agriculture. And it's reflected in that document, as it should be in my professional opinion. And I think that there's a lot of good work and participation from members of the township that went into that. You have any questions? I'm here and members of the committee are also here. I work for the commission.
I'd like to take the time to just thank the committee that's put all that time in. On the township level, there have been volunteers and they've been instrumental in getting us to this point. And it didn't happen overnight, so thank you.
One thing I would like to say is that all of the work that we have done, all of the information that we have accumulated here came from the residents and the surveys that have been sent out. Two or three years ago, Mark did the election thing and handout thing. We had them out to everyone. There's nothing in that plan that was just something that we thought up. Everything in there is what you all wanted and we brought it together and put it into a plan.
Would you mind at this point just going through the final steps of the process? I know there's a resolution prepared for us tonight.
Yes.
But following that.
The next step would be another public hearing, which would happen at the planning commission meeting, which is on September 24th. These meetings are held Mondays and they start at seven o'clock at night. So what would happen is I will present a brief report and the resolution if you should decide to pass a resolution. I'll take it to the planning commission and they will, they'll review the document and they'll make a recommendation to the county commissioners. Ultimately, it's up to the county commissioners to accept that document. And when they consider these documents for adoption, they really are looking to the township for feedback. So of course, everybody's welcome to those meetings. If somebody from the committee wants to come to represent the township or when the trustee wants to come, it's absolutely appropriate. And of course, if anybody has comments or things they want to see changed between now and that meeting, it's a time to make those comments. So that's the big thing about this process is it's very open to the public. Lots of public hearings, so there's a lot of time for people to take time to look at the document and make comments. We, I would anticipate the county commissioners looking to approve it sometime in early October. So pending the decision of this board, we'll schedule a time to get on to the county commissioners' agenda. And I'll be in touch through your fiscal officer and I'll probably contact Aldi directly and make sure you know that date.
I'm gonna move that the fiscal officer read the resolution into the record and I recommend that we make a decision tonight. Just a technicality, if you might have a second to my motion.
Is there a second to my motion to have you read the resolution into the record?
Yep.
No call. Jeff.
President, I'm here. I'm not voting on it. I just, yes.
Dan? Jeff or Ben? As a matter of adopting the Bowling Green Township Comprehensive Plan, whereas Bowling Green Township trustees formed a committee to prepare a comprehensive plan document, whereas the Bowling Green Township trustees contracted with the Licking County Planning Commission to provide technical assistance in the preparation of the comprehensive plan. And whereas the planning committee held monthly meetings, which were advertised to the public to determine to develop the comprehensive plan. And whereas the planning committee held a public hearing on July 18th, 2012, to receive the public comment on the comprehensive plan document. And whereas the planning committee voted on July 18th, 2012 to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan to Bowling Green Township trustees. And whereas the board of trustees of Bowling Green Township, Licking County, State of Ohio, held a public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan on the 28th day of August, 2012. Now therefore, it resolved Bowling Green Township, County of Licking, State of Ohio, that it hereby adopts the comprehensive plan, which is included as a part of this resolution this.
She's wanting to root that.
I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution and prepare it by planning permission.
You're accepting the comprehensive plan.
I take a breath, huh?
I didn't want thirty and ask.
Do roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yes. We'll skip back up to the top there and do the reading of the last meeting. We'll go ahead and leave the minutes out here on the table. They'll be ready soon. Guest speakers. Correspondents.
Okay, well, first piece of correspondence is on a real positive note. We still have a great start there. Our park committee, which is a real positive group, successfully got another grant. And I'll let them talk about it during the report. But I'm excited for it and I think it's just great leadership from a lot of wise men in the team that they were successful in getting at. Been working on trying to get this all year. When I had the. I had the engineers' office, questions come in and sometimes people ask, like after the windstorm, is this free online? In the right of way or is it online robbery? Finally got it from them. They took the time. And on every township road, I now have a document here to refer to of what the right of ways are on every particular road. So it'll be easier to answer some of those questions when people come in. That was, I thought, a real good thing trying to get taken care of. A couple of days ago, I received a letter from John Parker. He's our insurance guy. He wants, he sent this to me and would like to set up a meeting talking about what the letter he had sent to Jenny back in May about playground issues. So what I'll do, I'll give him a call, set up a meeting. Anyone else wants to be involved with that, let me know.
Go ahead and call me on it.
Okay. I'll call him tomorrow morning and see if we can set up prosecutor's office. They were here tonight. They've already gone over that. Several occasions here this year, things have come to the board through Jane. A lot of times the planning department where we get the correspondence, usually the meetings take four hours. So I've asked that they would also send that information to the trustees and managers. Because what happens is these things occur and it's never come through our table and then after the fact it comes here. So in an effort to try to get that information to people that might want to go to those planning meetings, I'm also getting copies of that now. So that's about it. Correspondence.
I received a letter from Licking County Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management about the storm damage. I will have to attend a meeting on September 7th. It looks like it must be going through. It had to be approved by the governor and the president. I received a letter from the Friends of Land Conservation, Licking County. The Licking County Trust requesting us to be members. I don't know if anybody is interested in that. Can you sign that? A letter from Payment Technologies. With information about payment if anybody wants that. Newsletter from Licking County, just sort of water. Oil special. That's all I had.
What's that? Is that the?
We. Yes. Starting, so everybody else out there is interested in it, so I need to get that back. As soon as you can have an address and get back to me.
Reports, safety. Fire company. Zoning.
Yes. I submitted one zoning violation to 14124 National Road, Donville. The violation was under section 9111, which is a limitation of number of principal structures per lot. Notified the landowner that they had 30 days which to comply, which would be September 13th of 2012. I had one permit branded that was at 16436 National Road for a rebuild slash new construction of a pole barn. They're rebuilding, but they're changing. And that was due to that storm.
What's the address on that?
16436 National Road. Teddy's got it. Yeah. Their pole barn, or their barn.
How many buildings are you allowed to have on your property?
This is primary structure.
Is it booked up yet?
Doesn't matter. It's violation of 911. It's not my place to judge. I'm one of those.
Is that it?
That would be it.
Nothing on zoning board that I made?
Are we gonna, are we gonna do a junk car because we have one that nobody smoothed anything off of? Do it Tuesday? No, I don't have it right now because I'm bringing junk cars up. Tuesday. Because you guys, it's now on you on what to do because he has not complied.
Is that all?
Yes.
Just to clarify, you said make sure.
Second Tuesday is September 11th.
Is anybody living in there? Or is it just sitting there waiting on?
Are you talking about the 9/11?
About the trailer.
To your trailer?
That's not my trailer. Got a question for you.
No, nobody's living in that trailer, but it does not matter.
We'll do public comment.
You have to read the zoning motion.
Let's just do public comment then. Alright, so there's gonna be a junk car meeting on September 11th at 7:00 PM, second Tuesday next. Is there a field, a comprehensive plan done? Department committee?
We had one page written this month and we also had like a three row. The larger bricks for the base of the platform came in. We're still waiting for the smaller ones. It's another couple of weeks for that. We did apply for the grant and we did get a portion of what we wanted. We requested for 2,701 dollars and we were granted 1,704 dollars for the hurricane spinner to replace the merry-go-round. And our next meeting is September 18th at 7:00 PM.
Do you guys have any information on that piece of equipment that I'd asked for last month?
Mark left me this. That I've seen that I. Still some change. I couldn't find the actual hurricane.
There's an actual picture that you may have. Yeah, there's a small one on that map. There was a color, there was a colored photo.
You're alright on. Yeah, that, no, that's not it. But there is a picture like similar.
You guys just give us some information on it before we do anything with that.
Did I, can I hear that miracle ran this game replacing?
If, if we choose to replace that piece of equipment or put a new piece of equipment in, how you guys can come up with the rest of the files? What's the difference in there?
I'm not as sure.
The next meeting's second. Eight, two, three, have that.
Yeah.
Can you give me that information before then?
Yeah.
You all finished, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, trash mandate. We kinda went over that pretty heavily there.
It got kinda chaotic there. You were gonna agree to.
Guys, I think for the first three months, I think points.
So any complaints named directed to you?
Correct. Diablo?
It's already done.
They are.
We're gonna check on the prosecutor because I think Gary talks.
What's that? I didn't know. Are you asking about sending the letters out to others? What I observed is that resident, they send one out to one of them already. Which hurts the public record.
I'll make sure it says.
Drug testing.
Well, Matt, did you send that out?
Then we want the drug testing. I guess we touched on that too. They don't want us to do any random drug testing. If we want to go forward, but if we still haven't gone forward, if we want to do that or not.
Well, I think we should have viewed the information they've kind of sent to all of you last. Doesn't have a. Next month we can proceed it up.
Tables, drug testing?
It's been on there all year, so it's another month.
Driving record. Obviously you guys know one of that's on it. Anything on inventory?
Well, yeah, I asked the engineer for five pieces of everything that was in our file to clarify what they had for all of our side. Sure enough, that hasn't been done since I was in the department. That's their most current information. I don't know if that matches their most current. I don't know. But I know there's been some incidents happening the last three and a half years. Probably aren't reflected on that. At least I've seen it.
Culverts, do you have anything on culverts? Culvert inventory, I guess culvert inventory on the road. Or do you need to take charge of that debt? Count.
I don't know if you're talking about both of them being done, yeah. That's what that... Let me show you what they sent. After that, I'll show you what was done last. That's gonna be, I can give it to you.
I think it's probably about the culvert center on the road.
Yeah, that's what this is.
Have you looked on that? And you don't count that? I thought you were gonna talk about that, no?
First, I have to find out where the starting point is and that's what I'm trying to establish here by this, what's registered in the engineer's office. That's what...
Can start with the one I gave you?
I'll leave a copy of whatever you got that's most current. I know that it...
I gave it to you already.
I got a copy of that too.
The most current just needs compared. We need to look at any invoices, purchases of money in the last three years for culverts for those. Either on the physical inventory or on the road, whichever way, or any other. Start to do some more.
So, you want to review that stuff, right? We want to do a...
Anywhere this next year, it needs to be as updated as possible when the physical inventories by law submitted.
We want a new business. Actually, I got a couple things on that business. Did you have any? Jeff, do you have any?
I don't think so, not at some event.
Did you guys get a chance to look at trash on Gutter Road?
I went out there. Didn't see anything when I got out there. I wasn't there the day after or anything. When I got out there, wasn't out there.
They got cleaned up like all of it properly and they know it's cleaned up. It's one thing, township.
Where did they take? Did they take some landfill?
They didn't. Township, was it all picked up?
By say?
Yes.
And was I correct, they're just paying the tax on it?
Yes. Did you know anything I had on unfinished, was the gutter, did you get cleared?
Well, it was left. I asked you guys to take a look at it. Did it go there or not yet?
Did you ever work on it?
Did you work at it?
Did not.
I mean, tonight afternoon, take a look.
I'm not gonna walk down, fix my main house after all.
Well, maybe, can you do next, take a look at it?
Does it need fixed?
Of course it does.
Well, let's get next one fixed, then.
So, you don't want to do the work ourselves?
Okay, let's do it ourselves, then. That's even better.
Take a look at it, just determine that.
Even better, they've counted some money. So, you haven't made any progress on that? You want to blah, 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 just have a volunteer play the...
I'm not gonna go into weeds with you. I think I clarified it pretty well.
I'm just asking, we haven't made any progress, right?
Just exit and remove all of them.
That's the only thing I had on the whole tour.
Anything on get done?
So, move on to new business.
Have a look at the problem before you fix it.
The only...
If you look at it, you have problems.
Here we go. I'm not going there with y'all.
The only thing we have on the new business is we have a 90-day employee review. We've had several people, employees on the, I guess. Worked for the township for 90 days, so need to go ahead and review them. You guys have any problems, questions?
Any questions? Good job.
I've worked with Tom, Tom Martin, some Jack. I've seen them in the past week, tried them both, they won't stay, so. Are you interested in staying, Tom?
I'll stay if I'm working days now, so.
Look for somebody else? Said look for somebody else, don't look for somebody else?
Yeah, might as well. Only worked one day in what, 90 days?
I mean, you had opportunity a couple times.
No, when the tree was through my house.
More than a couple times, so.
Did a good job, you did.
Yeah, don't...
What hours are you?
Find somebody else.
What hours, where are you, are you there?
I got other things to do.
Alright, so you just want, that's all that's...
Yeah, might as well.
Maybe off payroll, if, thanks for what you did, or something.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to take Donnie off the payroll, as discussed in the meeting.
We'll call Jeff.
Present.
On the motion.
Yes.
Something funny?
Yeah.
What's your answer? For you?
You?
Ben?
Yes.
It's my turn, I do it my way, Ben.
Alright, you guys have anything else on the new business?
No.
Yep? We'll move on to public comment. I know there were a few, but let's get back real quick. I know the public comment, Barb.
Well, yeah, the park committee, they're removing the miracle round. I thought you discussed it prior. I wasn't at last month's meeting because I was out of town, but somewhere they changed, they can remove it now. I thought it wasn't gonna be removed. The insurance said that it was good.
I haven't gotten a final word that they're gonna remove it, so...
That's what I just heard about a replacement of it. That means it's gonna be removed. Replace means remove. They're putting something else there. They're replacing.
How can they do that?
How can they do that?
Is that what you guys plan to do, is replace that with that piece of equipment?
But isn't that the township stuff and shouldn't the township have the right to say something? So, shouldn't there be public meetings prior to that or something? People be aware?
Should be, because when we did the...
My kids play on it and all of them, because they were at the Easter thing and other times have played on it. For that to be removed is ridiculous. The insurance said it's good.
That's a good thing over there.
When we did the park committee on swings and all the playground equipment, we all had, all of the trustees, we all got together and voted, I mean, helped with the grant and everything. You know, we don't, I don't know what's going on with this grant.
Well, my observations on that is the park committee's got everything publicly. They pulled their meetings, they have documented and the meeting minutes. I think they gave us a proper, I also witnessed them.
The last time it was said that that was not being removed. So, somewhere you changed it.
Well, I didn't change anything, but I will, I will state the fact that I heard the public input and it was yours.
That he says.
And they took that, they took that to heart that what the children liked was something that's been and that's exactly the unit that they...
No, we've said that they liked that.
They did listen to the input.
Nothing has been, they like that.
Well, I'm not arguing the fact that there wasn't, you know, any...
I'm not arguing.
...home maintenance or anything like, yeah, that's fine. I still want to see some, some information on it, on this piece of equipment. And it's still gonna have to go to voting before we take out this, not just put it in place.
Yeah, well, what are you doing with the old one?
We haven't decided to remove anything.
If, if, if it happened, what are you doing with it? In other words, it's going, somebody's backyard, you wanna have an auction on it or what?
No, it'll, it's still township property, so we'll have to dispose of it the correct way.
Hey, I think it's great that the park committee, if you want to, don't need to answer everything. Just as a suggestion, I've seen a lot of kids play on that playground. It's got some vintage history to it. Is it all removed? It puts a second variable around?
Well, the one issue hasn't even been addressed here, Dave, but, you know...
It's public comment, I have my hand up, so I make a public comment. Is it all removed? I have two variables.
That's great, Dave. I've got some answers for you that are relevant to that, if you want to hear them.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay? From my perspective, the utmost important thing is the safety of our children. If you look, take the time, which you should, Dan, to read the codes, the uniform codes, that is not something you could purchase today. It is not safe. And I pointed that out, it's been pointed out in many public meetings, so...
Has the insurance, nobody asked us?
It's his.
So, that is, to me, I take that hard. I don't want any kid getting hurt. I don't want to sue, but even more than that, I don't want any kids getting hurt. And it's not up to compliance, so...
Yeah, you kind of asked if there was room to put it, I mean, I'm not a genius on this stuff, but I know, you know, you have to have so much of a bucket around all the equipment and so much mulch, so you would have to extend it one way or another. If we're gonna stay inside the fence, that's gonna take green space away, which I definitely don't want to see. You know, there's gotta be some kind of yard they can play in. So, if a new piece of equipment goes in, it's either gonna have to be, the playground's gonna have to be extended as a whole, so there's more mulch, or something's gonna have to be removed.
I didn't realize, you're sure agreeing, that's why I asked, because there's room for the second one.
Right.
I think it's crazy that a playground, you have these grants to do things.
Sure.
The package has a whole layout and everything, it shows all that, it's very...
It has that.
You just have your hand in everything.
Can I get a copy of that too?
What is your opinion and Dan's opinion, since you both have younger children, Mr. Corketing doesn't, and your children do go up there?
I'm not arguing the fact, I just...
I just want your opinion on if it's safe or not. My children get on it, they're pretty safe.
I don't have a problem with my...
I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, the sidewalk's not safe. They call and bust your name, sorry.
My honest opinion, what would I rather see?
Swings aren't that safe neither. They call out them all the time.
I'd rather see the fence first, is what I'd rather see.
Chain them in.
You know, put a safety net around, so little kids can't run out of the road. That's what I'd rather see first, but that's just my opinion, so.
How long, is there a timeframe when using the grant money that we just got for that? Do we have to have matching funds by certain deadline or does that money, like money go back?
I don't think it's matching fund grant, I wonder.
Well, we didn't get a full grant, so we have to...
The part they didn't pay for was the shipping and the volunteer assist installation.
Well, it sounded like it almost came up to $1,000.
They paid for the, they paid for the whole unit.
But doesn't the township need to come up with like maybe a thousand dollars from what she said on the figure?
Several hundred dollars, the park committee, if they want to take it out of their funds that they have, which I know they do.
We haven't had a meeting to discuss this. Not everybody in the committee knows that we got the grant. So, September 18th, we'll be able to discuss this so that you guys are all invited, you know, discuss it and whatnot, so.
But I mean, is there a timeframe on that money? Like if you don't use it by X date, it goes back somewhere else?
I do not.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, that, you know, so...
I know Barb got a letter that she has to sign accepting.
Right.
That we will fulfill the terms of the agreement. How they did it last month.
Has that been signed or not?
No, not she. She's not here. If you have concerns, I'd highly recommend you come to the next park committee.
I work on Tuesday night.
Whoever it is.
I accept that.
I don't, I'm not the sense of talking.
As soon as I start talking, I'm setting my thing because last time I had a chance to ask a question, someone sitting over here took all my time up and then I was told my time was up, so. I forgot to say. First thing I want to ask you about the park, you got on here, park rules. Is park rules that, is one of the park rules that they are supposed to have shoes on in a park? Not, okay, I thought it had on a sign, must wear shoes or something. So, tell you if it, if it is, the last meeting we were here, we walked out the door and everybody else went that way, getting their cars, I went by, and all the kids were barefooted and I thought it was a rule that they had to have shoes because if they got hurt...
It's supposed to be for adults, it's a...
That we would be in trouble for that, I mean...
Well, one, one of them.
Wait a minute, don't answer that yet, because this one's gonna take two, a minute. Okay. The next one is, on the, like zoning violations, how, how's it decided who is in violation? Does somebody have to complain about that person or do you drive around and you just spot them?
Multiple ways. They can call, I can spot it, anybody can see it.
Okay?
I know, I've received calls before and I just pass them on.
Okay, but, but we've lived here about 16 years now and there has been the same junk cars sitting in the same place and I only hear about the same people all the time.
Have you made any complaints?
Oh, I can remember making complaints a long time ago and I gave up because they just got thrown in the trash again. I want to know where the zones are.
Have you called and made complaints about junk cars?
I know I've come to meetings before and I've told you, they're over here. Our ex zoning inspector is guilty of junk cars.
I know, I know, but she...
But he has, he's had them, he's had them for 16 years. When we were in court, they were there. There's still some there. There's still a house trailer sitting there that no one lives in.
So, which one?
You gotta give me a name. You're talking, the ex zoning inspector, Jimmy Whitehead?
Thank you, Jimmy Whitehead.
They have been there all the time. They were in the cornfield when, when we were going to court. They're over, by, you know, some other places, down the hill from us, the guy that's...
I'll tell you what, write it down, give me the address.
I want to know where the form is.
There's no form.
There's no form.
Just call. I go and I investigate, any phone call.
You've been by these places a million times.
Call your trustees, tell them.
But you know what? I don't see everything when I'm going for one, going to go do a search. I don't see that. How do you see, how do you see a fifth of a mile down our driveway?
Okay, we're not talking about you.
You don't come back there.
Are we talking about, you know, we're talking about it in the...
We're not gonna get them back.
Okay.
The best advice I can maybe get is just to...
If you don't come down our driveway, somebody has to be calling. And we're still getting the fire departments coming back when we're just burning the wood. They came back again, I think, after we were here, somebody just calls 911. They said they have to respond. We got the fire truck, we got the squad, we got all these people back there and they said, oh, you're fine, but we still have to come and we called that number. They said, we still have to come. Okay? Somebody's still calling them, let them know, nothing on fire, they're just calling.
Was there, was there visible fire and smoke to someone?
The first time...
If there's visible fire to someone, stop 911.
Will you, will you listen?
The fire department has, has a responsibility to respond. You have no argument.
The first time somebody called 911, the people living in the house trailer couldn't even see the fire, the fire department couldn't see the fire and they can't, they were going up everybody's driveway, down every road, looking for it. So, why is this person...
This is only there. We have to respond, period.
Just like Greg will tell you.
You're not hearing me. Why is this person...
I do this, I respond to those things. If someone tells you I'm not watching...
You're still not listening to me.
She's asking, why is this person...
Why is a person calling 911 when the fire department can't even see the fire?
Maybe they don't like it.
You got it. And I mean, I know who it is.
It's my person.
It's the township. I got a group of chores, that's a man that... You know how much townsmanship that brings up?
I got one fish and I'm gonna say... I don't worry about the rent property, forget about everybody else.
I wish people just leave us alone.
I mean, it's stupid.
Most people aren't gonna leave you alone because right now you have two junk cars sitting in your front yard. In our side yard, where? Right here, where? Didn't I just tell you that we're having an auction?
Having an auction.
Okay, I want you to...
That doesn't matter. That doesn't matter.
You need to tell me I'm not allowed to have an auction? Do you have anything sitting out? No. We get calls, we respond.
The best I can say is if you have a point about something like that, for us, or something like that, because I don't have a... I don't, who's calling, I can't help it.
We get calls, we respond.
The best I can say is, is if you have a plan about something like that, for us, or something like that, because I don't get out of there. I don't, if there's a fire department, I can't help it.
We're not moving the cars, because it would take you longer than the auction is coming up, or doing things about it.
Do they do anything yet?
Okay. Well, you better not, because we're not doing the auction.
All right, all right.
Let's just...
All right, all right. Couple more.
You better stop.
I don't want to set you down.
One suggestion for you. If you're going to have a fire, why don't you call the fire department, tell them you want to.
We did, we did.
And if you get a call, do you still have to respond?
We still have to.
We did.
Whether they call or not.
But the nut keeps on calling them. Nine-one-one.
Right, yeah, definitely, there's going to be...
It's our duty, because we have to respond.
You couldn't even see the fire, they couldn't find it.
But if they don't do it, then we're all...
We're all...
But put the shoe on the other side. Get somebody calling the house fire, and we all show up.
I understand that, I understand that. The same person had, I bet I think you did, have fire, why should you move?
I took it along my way.
I did it to the woods. No, we got to buy our better things to cook.
You're a better person.
We got some better things cooking.
Before we go on to the next one, she had two questions, go address the first one. Uh, we will be needing insurance people soon, and one of the things on the list is to go over our own park rules that are on the post and some. Hopefully that will...
But they were all barefooted, I worry about that, because they can have their feet cut. Should we do one of the courses?
All right, any other public comment, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to what I listed quite a few months ago, you guys working for us, and, uh, in light of everything that's gone on with you, Ben, are we safe in the, in the, in the Bowling Green Township anymore? Is there any, has there been anything happen to you as far as the trustees? You've been suspended or anything, or as far as your upcoming trial?
If I knew what you're talking about, that's a personal matter, I'm going to bring it to the township table. Um, I talked to my attorney about it, she said, it's not township business, that's personal. I'm sorry.
It is business when you're working for us.
I'm trying to find that, find that question.
Um, from what I understand, um, for a township trustee to be removed, it has to be a felon. There's no felon. From what I've read and understood, but, uh, misdemeanors are all involved, and it's personal matter. Now, can I answer his question that he was asking earlier about campers? Somebody's living in the camper, and there's a house on that, same property, that's two primary structures. If that camper is for recreational use, no, campers are supposed to be recreational use, not for dwelling.
Well, you can look that up if you want, if you have to.
But if it becomes, if it becomes a dwelling point, then you're in violation.
Well, there's nobody to come as well until they tear the other place down. Is that correct?
Now, if they're utilizing a camper while they are building, okay, they still got to talk to me, because we had a thing for construction use, they have to let us know. Their trailer's for construction use.
Have you talked with the resident, or did you just send a notice?
I don't have to talk to the resident. I do not have to call an individual and say, hey, you're in violation.
So, the answer's no.
I said, that's right, the answer's no. I do not have to call that resident.
I would suggest that she would do that anyways, because that means she's going to have to know it's a much property.
I will not go to your door and talk to them. I will do what is safe for me.
He has a phone number on that bill where he's been over the street, you can call him.
No.
Yes.
I do not have to call.
I think we have one more.
It's not in the rules.
Uh, the other day, I was down in Cooper River, and I noticed the sign was all mangled for, you know, ninety-three...
In the S tournament?
What's that?
In the S tournament? No, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I talked to my neighbor down there, and he said there was a private contractor going down through there, doing some free trimming, and that's who actually mangled that sign up. Did it counterfire anybody to go down and do some trimming work?
They're probably someone, right?
Yeah, it's a factory company, it's back there trimming. Yeah, they did a lot of work back there. He said that's who actually mangled that sign up.
I received a call from, um, Mr. Love.
Yeah, that's right there, bud.
Right, about that sign, and I told him to get up there, replace it or whatever we need to do, but he said...
But it wasn't anybody from the township, right?
No, yeah, he said he...
Some private contractor. I didn't know if you guys hired somebody to do it.
I don't know, do you know who was working in there?
I don't, I just never explained that much. I thought it was, you know, kind of weird that it was there, and he said it was done by those people that went down through it, did some trimming work. So, I don't know who it was.
That's, that's what he, that was a pass for me also, that was whoever it was.
Whoever they are, yeah.
Right, whoever the utility company wants to come through, that's who he had passed on, so the utility company also...
I didn't know if you knew about that.
I know, two days ago.
I just, I'm just happy a couple days ago that I...
We'll get replaced, definitely.
We know who the person is, we're on the property, we should...
You don't know who's on there?
Tell them we get a sign on there. Any other questions, public comment?
This deals with road signs. When you're entering Lincoln County from Perry County off Max Road, there's nothing indicating that. There's nothing indicating that we are zoned. You also cannot see the sign because it's shoved back in the property owner's area, and half the sign is missing.
By therapy.
Yes, and if you also drive around, people don't know this town is zoned. Because the only thing you see is off toward it, nowhere else. We didn't. Believe me, we didn't. Nobody told us. We didn't.
So, yeah, but the signs are...
The signs, when they're going to finish fixing the sign?
We didn't look at them.
Max Road. The sign's way back in the property owners.
In this point here?
Yeah. And there's nothing there telling you, you just entered Bowling Green Township or Lincoln County, and this area is zoned, nothing. Tells you, you just went into Perry County.
Do people want signs like that? I mean, give your guys a opinion, do you guys want signs that say...
I think the people want to know if there's something on it. The only place they know is off toward it.
So, everywhere we, I mean, give me a guy's input on this, everywhere we're going to enter the township, whether it be there, um, coming off Rank into, uh, South thirty-one or something up there.
Yeah, you should let the people know this township is zoned, yeah.
There are some out there that have been purchased years ago in the past. There's still some out there.
Maybe you think we should do the more major roads?
I have one last thing about cars, I told Barb. I don't know, I think maybe intersections would be good.
For...
When you hit an intersection, say, zoned, you know?
I just...
Or put signs, I don't know.
Every time that you cross from one township into other township, I think it should be good.
Every, yeah, you've got a lot of that.
I mean, do you want to walk from Bowling Green Township, then, then, I was asking, is that what people want?
No, I just, I agree, just that we should say, yeah, Bowling Green Township is zoned for you.
Well, let me sit down and figure out, probably sign, I don't know, do something else.
I mean, I know that's probably you can do all of the little expense, but just do five popular...
Yeah, why not be a budget?
Even on the, on the other names, why, why would you add it to the road name at the end? Bowling Green Township Zone. Max Road, Bowling Green Township Zone.
You see, if you...
You know, ten dollar signs that part of the park like that, can you have them just say, zoned for you, and add them to the signs?
When we order those also, I think we'll use the numbers, potentially, add those numbers, we'll get a better...
Well, since they do, oh no, it's just numbers.
Thirty-five dollars for twenty-four eighty-two. It's just numbers.
What's that one?
What for white, you can use small numbers.
Is that it, Barb?
Yeah, I have to look at my calendar. Um, on the junk car thing, the two cars, it's off the end of our driveway, that's going to be in the auction, are both running cars.
You have off, right?
They just, yes, but they do not have, they probably don't have current tags, but they are running cars, they're not junk cars, they do run. And the other thing is, the thing about the zoning, sixteen years ago, when we bought the property, we did not know that it was zoned. We already had a towing business, and then, because no one told us it was zoned, no one even told us, we, my daughter was going to the wrong school for I don't know how many years before they even told us that. So, we ended up with no way to make a living without spending another eighty thousand dollars on a place over in, uh, Hopewell Township. So, it's cost us dearly, plus the money that we had to pay in court, just to be able to survive and have any kind, you know, to be able to pay our bills. But, no one told us it was zoned, we didn't know. How are, how is a person supposed to know?
Your relatives.
No one told us.
It's a real relationship.
No, they didn't even know what school.
We shouldn't be grandfathered.
Sixteen years ago, you moved in this area? It would have been in about ninety-five or ninety-six. Jimmy White... Nineteen ninety-eight, and nineteen eighty-five, this township is zoned. Your business is not grandfathered. Because you knew... Who said it was? If it was grandfathered, it would have been taken to court and all that. Who said it was? So, you weren't allowed to come in. I didn't say that it was. I said, I didn't know.
Is that it? Any other public comment?
Not a big deal.
Not a big deal. Not me, so... Thank you.
I took you down the train, you got me spun off and dropped.
I told you, it was crazy. If you want to... I sure know yourself wide open there, you mean. You don't even know yourself wide open. So, this is... Yes, it's just... I'm not funny, you know, this is my meal. I'm not... Six. Yeah. They have a first one, they have a last one. Yeah. They have a first one, they have a last one. They come back there, they come up there, they're all over the place. Yeah. They have a first one, they have a last one. Yeah. Go ahead, Barbara, watch your speed.
Check four, three, six, six hundred and fifty dollars. I have four man.
I'll say, yeah, that's good. Four, five, six, twelve.
If I do this, is that...
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-five dollars, one night, seven change, so...
She got back with you.
Oh, shoot.
He's having a...
I like to sit in that car.
Yeah, Ron.
Second call, not...
I don't think it was like, you played on it.
Hey, you look busy, you're driving.
What do you want me to do right now?
Yeah, we're gonna have to...
Anytime, anytime.
Well, I don't think we can now, but we're...
We don't have to take one.
I don't know, you have to be ready to say, oh, it's a...
That's not church, that's just...
Two, three, four, five.
We're not here.
Everyone's going to do it.
Go in?
With us.
I can't tell.
Are you going to do that, okay?
It's going to...
I got everyone on my board.
I can't make it back there.
I got these systems, I want to go to the hospital, they have a time, they have to be down, just be there.
I can get a saw, I can get a hammer.
It's not bad.
The juice that died, uh, some of it.
That's the, yeah.
And I like that, yeah, so you can catch up.
You're like, you're walking there, it's like, I mean...
I'm trying to...
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
Yeah, I'll find out more after.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
It's not bad.
The juice that died, uh, some of it.
That's the, yeah.
And I like that, yeah, so you can catch up.
You're like, you're walking there, it's like, I mean...
I'm trying to...
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I bought a house, I bought a house, I bought a house.
I'm playing the poker more afternoon, so, I'll be around.
It's thirty-five dollars, it's four, please, two.
Ten, thirty, come together.
How are you doing?
Ten thousand, seven dollars and twelve cents.
Seven, four, five, ten, ten, seven, seven dollars and twelve cents.
You got mine, you can express it, obviously.
No, I just...
It's just a whole thing, you can't make it.
A lot of places sell that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we're like six.
One, seven, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight,